County. That's, um, for your birthday.
Tomorrow is?
That was human resource.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah.
I thought for sure it was you.
Kind of, well, yeah. Julie.
It's 12 minutes. We have to go down there. There it is. They show up all the time. And it teaches a lot, but.
We're lying.
Two boys. Man, that's doing fast. First we started down on Morgan Valley Drive. Right next to Giles Bay. In between Phil and Tupperly Shaw. Is that little house? Remember to switch it this time. I never switch mine. That does teach me. I need to be a couple minutes late.
Yeah.
Did she nail you yet?
She nailed me.
Usually I am a couple minutes late. I always hope to harden engaging.
I hope I kept her standing.
You what?
You got an act to getting out of it.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Morgan County Planning Commission to order Thursday, September 14th, 2023. I've asked Member Miller to give us an opening prayer and then he will rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My dear and my Father, we're grateful that we have this opportunity to meet together as a planning commission, hope that we might be inspired as to how to best represent and help the community in moving forward. Bless that everybody here might travel in safety as they return home and grateful for many blessings that live in this great community in Jesus Christ. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next is the approval of agenda, a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Member Phillips. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Any conflicts of interest should be with code changes. Next on the agenda is public comment. Time.
Tina.
We welcome Tina. If you have any comment at this time, okay. We will move on to item number six. This will be discussion, public hearing, and decision on text amendments.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the planning commission. Item number six on tonight's agenda is for amendments to Morgan County Code modifying the following sections. Eighteen dash twelve dash twenty is eight dash twelve dash twenty. As a referral to the planning commission and county council, this will change requirements for a concept plan to apply to eight lots or less. Eight dash twelve dash forty-six, this is utilities, this will change the utility section to define dry utilities. And eight dash five K dash two scope, this will change the requirements within the town center zoning concerning development. Staff received direction from the county commission to amend Morgan County Code to modify eight dash twelve dash twenty and eight dash twelve dash forty-six. Additionally, staff received direction from the planning commission to amend Morgan County Code to modify section, section eight dash five K dash two. Staff believes that the following drafts that are, or the drafts that are before you tonight, for these code text amendments, simplify the process for concept plans for smaller subdivisions. They'll provide a definition to Morgan County Code that doesn't exist for dry utilities and require applicants to submit a concept plan for their town center zone change requests. These text amendments address issues that the planning and county commission have with the adopted code and clarifies discrepancies that create confusion for town center rezones and small subdivision applications. Along with Josh, can I answer any questions you may have? Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
I have a couple. I'm curious to know what is the difference between eight and 10 lots? Why are, why are we worried about that?
It refers to the, the level at which before it comes to the planning commission. So right now, eight above, yeah.
Hang on, that question was why, why it's being changed?
Why is there a request to change it?
The county commission asked to change this because currently, right now, for a concept plan approval, if it's eight lots or less, it, I approve it. So let's take Edison Rose, for instance. Edison Rose is nine lots. It's a small subdivision, but they have to go to planning commission and county commission to get their concept plan approved, even though there's still a small subdivision. And then when they submit for their small subdivision preliminary plat, final plat, it stops at you.
So you're changing it for the Rose family or they want to change it for the Rose family?
No, we're changing it for all small subdivisions going forward from now on.
I understand that part of it. I get that part. But we're changing it for the Rose family here.
No, that's not correct.
Why are we changing that?
Because it needs to be changed.
Why?
A small subdivision is, according to state statute, 10 lots or less.
I get, the state statute is?
Yeah, so state statute defines small subdivisions and it defines large subdivisions. And our code takes those things and moves forward. So a small subdivision, they submit a small subdivision that's 10 lots or less, and yet our concept plan section is different.
So you're just trying to mirror the legislature's request for?
That's correct. We're trying to mirror what the small subdivision actually is.
I think what happened, our small subdivision used to be eight lots or less, and we changed code to be 10 lots or less, but I think this little section of code didn't get updated and it was left at eight on the concept.
That's fine. I don't really have heartburn over this. It just strikes me as odd that we're going to change it from eight to 10. I don't, I don't get that. I'd like to know.
I think it just marries up with the 10 lot for preliminary and final.
That's fine if it's the state, but I don't have a problem with.
It treats small subdivisions the same for both concept plans and those as well as for the actual preliminary plat, final plat.
And that is in the state code?
That's my understanding, that these things are defined in the state code.
And we're not changing it for the Edison Rose, but it was Edison Rose subdivision that pointed this conflict.
Does the county have, I'm curious, if you're coming here to us to ask us to do this, does the county, why doesn't the county just do it or is that part of what we are supposed to do, is mirror the legislature? Is that what's?
Well, the state statute's going to take, it's going to supersede our code. And so if our code is going to dictate what a small subdivision is, then we need to be inconsistent.
I appreciate that, Josh. Thank you. I get it.
Okay, let's review it one more time. We're moving from eight to 10. And at 10, then what?
All right, so 10 or less is a small subdivision.
Okay.
So for a concept plan, that's a small subdivision, or a preliminary plat, final plat, that's a small subdivision, they will be treated the same.
Which will go to what level?
Which means for eight or, or 10 or less, for a concept plan, I approve it after review with the county engineer, and then it will go to you for final approval for the preliminary final plat.
Okay. And it was for the concept going all the way and then stopping at us for the preliminary final?
That's correct.
If it was above eight?
If it was above eight. Eight or nine, it went, eight, nine plus, it came both to you and county commission. So the county commission said, we need to fix this.
Well, it stops, when does it go to the county commission?
Well, a small subdivision for preliminary final plat never goes to county commission.
Yeah, but what's the number when it does go? I mean, so 10 and then, if it's 11 and then that's considered large to go to the county commission?
Greater than 10, so 11 plus is a large subdivision. And that requires recommendation by you, approval by the county commission. And that's for preliminary plat, has to be submitted separately. And then the final plat goes back directly to the county commission.
I just had one more just question, or just more curiosity than anything. If the state statute already supersedes our statute, then in reality, couldn't the applicant just go by the state statute and we'd have to agree to that anyway?
Well, technically, our code needs to follow state statutes. So we would have to either delete this section and say, mirror the state statute, or we need to comply with the state statute.
I was saying, if we didn't comply, what happens?
Ah, well, I mean, we're going to make them follow our code, and if it's not according to state statute, well, that puts me in kind of a, kind of a bad situation. So we're trying to correct it.
No, I, I fully appreciate correcting. I was just more curious of if there is a conflict, what happens? If there's difference between the codes?
I guess it depends on if I get challenged. I'd rather not get challenged.
I'm not asking you to get challenged, I'm just curious.
Any questions more on that one, the eight to 10? We can move on to the next one if you have any questions on the dry utilities.
Does all these go in the subdivision part with that eight dash? Is that what they comply with?
The 12, the eight, 12 is subdivisions.
Just walk me through really quick what they're changing or what we're trying to update on this one.
So the, with several of the other subdivisions that have gone through, there was some discussion about whether there was provision provided when the utilities went in to, to put in the conduits for fiber or broadband. And our code is silent on dry utilities about whether those utilities need to be put in at the time. So if they either have to contact the fiber and the broadband and the other dry utilities ahead of time to make sure they're put in, obviously power's going to go in, they're going to do that, but there's nothing that requires them to work with broadband or fiber. So the county commission directed staff to define dry utilities to make sure that when it says all utilities in eight dash twelve dash forty-six, the developer knows that this also applies to broadband and fiber.
So before they didn't have to put broadband and fiber in and now they do?
Well, it just wasn't defined.
But if it's not defined, then they wouldn't have had to do it, right?
Technically, yeah.
Okay, and on the town center zoning, that was our request.
That's correct.
So any questions on the wording there? For staff?
What does enumerate mean?
Say that again?
What does enumerate mean?
Enumerate?
Required to enumerate standards. Right on A.
Anything that's not bolded and in cap is existing language. So the only thing that I'm adding is what's bolded and capped.
Enumerate state list, maybe you can better list them out.
Bullet point list, whatever you want to call it.
How much could this concept plan be changed? From concept, what do I have to put in?
Well, the concept plan isn't going to deal with drainage, it's not going to deal with contours, it's not going to deal with anything. It's a conceptual drawing, and so there has to be some ability to modify it to some extent to address where the drainage is actually going to go. That's one example of why it needs to be changed a little bit at least.
But this concept plan will be part of a development agreement. So more of a contract.
Right, so the worry that the planning commission had based on the last town center zoning application that went through, M&amp;D Nelson, was that there was no concept plan requirement to be attached to that to give anybody an idea of what they were proposing. So if they propose a concept plan with a narrative of what they're proposing with the rezoning, then after they get their rezoning application with that concept plan, then it gives the county commission basically direction on negotiation for the development agreement.
Josh, does it make sense, is it out of line? If I remember that conversation right, does it make sense to expand this beyond town center zoning? Is that too much to ask?
Well, the discussion.
I know it's centered around M&amp;D Nelson.
Yeah, legally, I don't think we can do that. Because if somebody wants to come in and just rezone their property, they have no obligation to disclose what they want to do with the property. If they're coming in to get town center zoning, which has specific requirements to get a development agreement, then there is some argument there that you can require a conceptual plan upfront to guide the development of the project. Because there's still negotiation between the county and the developer for that development agreement down the road. And the concern that the, the planning commission had and the residents had is that they had no idea of what the developer was even proposing.
Right.
And so with the town center requirements requiring a development agreement, it's like the PC zone overlay sort of, where I think you can allow or require a conceptual plan upfront, but if somebody has hard zoning, eight twenty, or, you know, whatever their zoning is, and they want to go to another hard zone and they're not asking for anything special or specific, I don't think we can legally require a conceptual plan.
Can I ask the question differently? Is there any other zones that would make sense to have this requirement or zoning?
No.
Oh, okay.
There's no other zoning district that we have that requires a development agreement as part of, as the rezoning.
We have the resort special district that already have this type of requirement.
Well, if that's the case, I think it looks great. Thank you.
If there's no more questions, then I'll have a motion to go into public hearing.
So.
Okay. A motion by Member Phillips and a second by Member Stevens. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing time. Okay, so a motion to go out.
So moved.
Member Bass, motion by Member Bass and a second by Member Phillips. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're out of public hearing. Any more discussion? What I would like, so there, is to have separate motions for each one, so they're not all lumped together and present maybe problems.
Madam Chair, we forward a positive recommendation to the county commission for the revision of code eight dash twelve dash twenty. Based on the findings listed in the staff report.
Okay, I have a motion by Member Bass. And a second by Member Stevens. Any discussion on this motion? And we're moving from the eight to the 10. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I move forward a positive recommendation to the county commission for the revision of eight dash five K dash two scope, the addition of a concept plan and narrative for a rezoning application based on the findings listed in the staff report of section fourteen.
Okay, I have a motion by Member Bass. And a second by Member Stevens. Any discussion on this motion? And we're moving from the eight to the 10. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I move forward a positive recommendation to the county commission for revision of eight dash twelve dash fourteen, based on the findings listed in the staff report.
Okay. Put dash. It was a fourteen, forty-six.
Forty-six. Eight dash twelve dash forty-six. Dry utilities.
The dry utilities one, okay. I have a motion by Member Bass.
Second.
A second by Member Stevens. Oh, and Member Miller. Any discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Madam Chair, I move forward a positive recommendation to the county commission for the revision of eight dash five K dash two scope, the addition of a concept plan and narrative for a rezoning application based on the findings listed in the staff report of section fourteen.
I have a motion, I have a second. Second by Member Phillips. Any discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Madam Chair, I move forward a positive recommendation to the county commission for the revision of eight dash five K dash two scope, the addition of a concept plan and narrative for a rezoning application based on the findings listed in the staff report of section fourteen.
I have a motion, I have a second. Second by Member Phillips. Any discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're on to business and staff questions.
I don't have any business or staff questions.
Well, you can say what you said that at the plan, at the county commission, they're going to be going over their work session.
Okay, so, this coming Tuesday, the county commission, I put the PC zoning district on for a work session with the county commission, so they can go over and address any comments or concerns or questions that they have or make any changes that they want to do. And then after that, probably the next meeting after that, which I believe is the third, I've added an item onto the work session for the county commission to bring a draft of the, of the draft text amendment for flag lots. About six months ago, they had asked me to propose some language for that, and they would decide whether to go forward with it or not. If they decide to go forward with the language, then I will bring it back to you and we can either decide if you want a work session, we can handle it through a work session first and address any concerns, go through the language that you, concerns or whatever that you may have, and then we can bring it forward.
I thought we got rid of flag lots.
We never really had them. Through the PRUD, flag lots were created, but we never had a flag lot ordinance.
Now, our current code strictly prohibits flag lots, but if you go up and down Morgan Valley Drive or Old Highway Road or Highway 66, you can see them, all of those.
Where's the one down Morgan Valley Drive?
If you want to come by my office, I can pull up the map and I can show you.
There's more of them around the way.
Yeah. That's not real clear here.
That does bring up a question of enforcement. I'd be curious to know how we're getting the flag lots if we have no ordinance on them.
The PRUD, because you could have flexibility in frontage, and so they, they made these two lot PRUDs?
Are we saying that that's the only place there's a flag lot, is in a PRUD?
They, in, in last few decades, yes, they were created through a PRUD.
Well, I guess that's what my question is, is so if they're down Morgan Valley Drive, was it because of a PRUD or some other reason?
I'm assuming a PRUD, maybe?
Well, our current code only goes back to 2010, so I, I don't know if the code before 2010 allowed it or not.
There was PRUDs back in the late 90s.
But there's newer houses than, than that. There's one by the State Center that's not 10 years old. It's on a flag lot.
It did, it was a PRUD.
It was?
Uh huh. I remember when that one happened.
So the land was in a PRUD, they just didn't build the house after?
Yeah, they built the house later.
I just had several people come in and say, I'd like to develop my land into a flag lot, and I say, flag lots are prohibited. And they say, well, what about my neighbor across the street? And I pull up the map and sure enough, there's a flag. I'm like, I don't know how they got approved, but they're not, they're not.
Well, that's what I'm saying back to, to the commission. We come into these meetings and we make the policies or suggest the policies to the commission, but that people do what they will. And there's a flag lot right up here on Highway 66 that I'm aware of that wouldn't have been allowed under our ordinances.
And that one?
So it's a, to me, it's a enforcement issue.
Well, it goes beyond that too, because if somebody wants to divide their land using meets and bounds and not go through the subdivision process, they can take it to the recorder's office and the recorder is required to record it off.
I had a question about that. So Joshua, is meets and bounds a state? Is that a state thing?
No, it's just a type of legal description. So when you have a subdivision plat, that plat, there's, there's an overall legal description that defines the entire area of the subdivision plus each individual lot. So that when you go to sell your house, you don't have to say, starting at the point of bearing going 800 feet northeast to the corner of blah, 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 and then define the entire shape. You can say lot one of the subdivision plat. And then that, that plat defines each of those lots. Whereas if, if I owned a piece of property that was a parcel, not part of it, I could create a legal description using those bearings, north and south, and the degrees, the minutes, and the decimal, and I could define a space on that property, go to the recorders, and I record that split. But doing that doesn't make it a developable parcel. Typically, people do that, they want to divide off for tax purposes, if they want it taxed separately from the larger parcel or whatever. But what happens is they then sell that piece that they've divided off, not through the subdivision process, and then other people buy it thinking that they have a developable lot. And so one of the difficulties in my position is determining whether the lot is developable or if they have to go through and create their own subdivision.
So how does that create the right to create a lot? I don't get that. I don't understand how meets and bounds would create the opportunity to create a lot if it's non-conforming or if it's not legal. How, how is it they can then say, yeah, we're going to build on? How can they say it's a lot that we can build on?
Well, that, that's the problem. So dividing it off through meets and bounds shouldn't create a developable lot. And I can't speak for my predecessors, but if people go into the recorder's office with a meets and bounds legal description to divide their land, according to the treasurer's office or the recorder's office, they're dividing it for tax purposes, not for development purposes, but they're still allowed to sell off.
But if I understood correctly, and I probably don't, didn't you say that creates a law for them to develop and build?
No, it doesn't create a developable lot, but I can't speak for my predecessors and how they view those lots or what kind of research they did to determine that.
That's what I don't understand, I guess. I'm sorry, I'm slow, but just because somebody uses meets and bounds, how does that create a problem for the county saying, we'd like to build a property on this, and we're saying, it doesn't meet any of our zoning, so you own the ground, you can do, put your dog or your horse on it or whatever. Why, why are we obligated to say, yeah, we're going to create a lot or?
Well, if somebody comes in and they bought a lot and they submit a building permit on one of these lots, do I just issue that building permit? Or should I be doing research and then tell them, look, you don't have a developable lot, it was divided through meets and bounds five years ago. In order to make it a developable lot, you got to go through the subdivision process to create your own subdivision so that it was divided off correctly.
I know, and that, I guess that's my default position, that if you're going to buy a piece of ground and you have a vision for it, isn't it your obligation to go find out whether the ground is viable or not?
That's true, but all those permits and applications come through my office and they're not going to tell me that they purchased it, you know?
I know, that's what I'm saying. Isn't that, isn't it professional staff, don't you say, sorry, it's, you don't have what you need? You can go back and create a subdivision maybe or something like that.
Well, that's what we, we do do, but I don't know what my predecessors did. Because there's a lot of lots that have been divided off or parcels that have been divided off, and you look. off, and you look at it, and you're like, how in the world is there a house on there?
That's what, that's what I was saying about the enforcement. We haven't had enforcement, so people have been able to do what they want. I don't know what the answer to that is, but people are going to do, continue to do what they want.
So I could just go in, make up some definition, give it to the recorder?
You surveyed off, you surveyed the parcel.
You could even submit an erroneous.
Yes.
And she is required to record it with the error, if you ask her to record it. I, state, state law.
It is state. But like you said, it doesn't make it a buildable lot. It just, you created a parcel.
But the person that bought it thinks it's a buyable.
Doesn't know that, right.
Buildable lot.
That, that is kind of interesting, because real estate contracts are all caveat enter, right? Being buyer beware.
Well, if you're going to buy real estate, the law considers you an educated buyer. So you can't plead ignorance when you're buying property. Because it's assumed that you're educated enough to buy the piece of property and do your due diligence.
So, but if you take that into consideration, then when these people, kind of, I can remember Wilson's point, whether they bought a lot, it was used through meets and bounds or not. But if you buy a lot using meets and bounds, then shouldn't we kind of look at it and say, you're an educated buyer?
Well, I would, I would suggest that sometimes that is the answer. I'm sorry, it's not a developable lot, but if the lot was created pre-1980, there's no way for me to go back and check the codes back in 1980 to see what the requirements were. So at what point do I say, I don't know whether it was divided legally or not, do you have a property? So, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
The county map's not show that. If I go into you and I say I bought three acres, and I look on you, your county map don't show where I own there.
No, in fact, the property history research that we have to do, we go through the recorder's office. We have to get the recorder to help track how far back it was split, and where, what property it was split from, and when.
So how do people find out what zone they're in? They ask, I guess.
Well, we have a map that shows the zoning.
That's what I'm saying back to you. The zoning map should say, you have a possibility of creating a lot here with your ground, whatever the system is, whether it goes through a subdivision, or it's already existing legal, right?
Yeah, our, our zoning map shows that, but it also shows all the other parcels that have been split off, that have been recorded. So if somebody comes in and they say, hey, I just bought this property, I want to put a house there, or what are the requirements to get a building permit, or can I divide this into multiple lots? And I look at it, and it has no frontage, then my first question is, I'm not sure it's a developable lot, I need to do property history research, how much time do you have? Because there's some properties, we've been trying to do property history research, and it's been months, to try to track it all down.
I see your problem.
Is a flag lot something that we want?
I'm not saying it's something you want. I'm not here advocating for them. There was a conversation in county commission where they were talking about other alternatives to help property owners be able to do something with their property. So there's, flag lots is an option. There's different places that I worked that had like family farm divisions, which allowed the property to be divided. And in those states, it was even without a subdivision, you could divide them off and give them to your kids, or a family member, and then that family member had to own that piece of property for a certain number of years before they could even think of selling. So there, I mean, there's different options to look at if you want to be able to divide your land off and give it to family members, but they asked for me to bring something back, and then they would decide whether they wanted to proceed or not. So it may not even come back to you. It may not.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay. So we're on to the minutes. If everyone got their changes in? So, a motion?
Approved, or motion approved minutes?
Okay, a motion by member Stevens. A second.
Second.
A second by member Bass. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
So move.
Second.